I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall for the Village of Cary for Tuesday, February 16, 2016, to order with roll call, please.
Chapman?
Here.
Dudak?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Kozler?
I was gonna do that right before we get to Jim in a minute.
Hang on, Jim.
You'll be right after public comments, before we get into business. All right, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you know if anybody's signed in?
They didn't.
Is there anybody here that want to address the board on anything other than what's on the agenda? We'll go ahead and open and close. We also have trustee Kozler attending via teleconference. Since this is committee, I'm looking for consensus to allow.
Yes.
Any issues with that? Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm looking for the consideration of the February 2, 2016 Committee of the Hall meeting minutes. Were there any edits, changes, corrections? Move that to consensus agenda. The same with the February 2, 2016 Village Board meeting minutes. Any edits, changes?
Mayor, I have just a small edit. On page five.
Which one?
This is the minutes.
For the board.
For the board.
Village Board, yeah. On page five, where it says that I stated I would prefer there not be a curb cut on Northwest Highway, just by itself, I don't particularly like that comment. The reason that I suggested that I did not want a curb, or that I did not want a curb cut on Northwest Highway was to not impede the ingress and egress and backup of traffic, and that I suggested that the only way to enter that development be off of Giannis.
Okay. I do remember that. Does anybody have an issue with that addition, too? We'll go ahead and make the correction, and we'll approve that as amended. We'll now move forward with a presentation from the Police Pension Board. Chris? Chris, Chris, or Chris? Chris will start us out.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome the representatives of the Cary Police Pension Board. Typically, at least on an annual basis, we started this last year as a tradition. We like to have some dialogue between the Pension Board and the Village Board through the Committee of the Whole process. So we welcome the team here tonight. Like to turn it over to some of our board members to walk us through a presentation that they have about pension funding in Cary. So, welcome tonight.
Thank you. Did you miss her?
Yeah. Is that turned on?
No.
This is Chris Spurrel. He's a Cary resident that is an appointed member of the Police Pension Board for the benefit of the public in the audience.
Okay. That works. Okay, great. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to have some dialogue with you on what's going on with the pension fund. I think it's a great opportunity for us to explain, and a good opportunity for you to make some informed decisions. As Chris said, actually, I go by Christopher Spurrel. Let's just do that tonight, because that'll make it a little bit easier on all of us. I'm an 18-year resident of Cary, and I, with three partners, own a consulting firm in Barrington, where we do taxes, accounting, financial planning. We actually do do retirement plans, and although that's not my particular expertise, my expertise is more the tax accounting, financial planning area, although I do work with profit pension plans. I don't, I'm not the expert in our company on that, just for full disclosure. Some of my credentials, I'm an MBA, CPA license, CFP, Masters in Tax and whatnot. I've been in this business for about 25 years now, and during that time, I've had the opportunity to brush up with a lot of financial professionals, both in the public and private life. And I have to say that since I've come on the Pension Board, we've worked with Lauterbach and Amon for a while, time I've been on the board and before that, and I think Todd here and Lauterbach and Amon represent the top tier of financial professionals. So I'm happy to say that we've got some excellent advice as far as that's concerned. So Todd here, if there are any kind of technical questions you might have, he's available to us so that he might clarify some things, because as I said, I'm not the pension expert I do want to talk a little bit about defined benefit plans in general, and it might surprise you, since I'm on the board, for me to say I don't like them at all. And the reason I don't like them is because, number one, they're extremely complex. Imagine this, okay? You're saving for retirement, and you've got to think, okay, what am I going to earn between now and retirement, okay? Am I actually going to retire on that year? What are my wage increases likely to be? What are my promotions likely to be? What about terminations and new employment and things like that? Add on top of that, add on top of that, the fact that we have to look at cost of living increases, and then try and predict the rate of return we're going to get on our investments. That's what every family should be doing, and that's the kind of stuff that I pull people through. But then you start multiplying that by everybody on the police force, and we've got 26 active right now in the pension plan. And things get increasingly more complex, so complex that a lot of them are being underfunded and mismanaged, okay? Just to be blunt on that. And for Exhibit A, B, and C, I give you the auto industry, the airline industry, and of course, the social security system, which is a defined benefit plan. Add on top of that, the political aspects of it. If you're in corporate America, it's very easy to say, you know, I'm going to make some very liberal assumptions. Maybe we won't actually hit those targets. But you know what? I can make my expense go up or down, and I can make my financial statements look pretty much the way I want to in terms of that, okay? On the political side, I mean Exhibit A, Chicago, we can actually make the same assumption to say, okay, now we can fund schools, now we can fund this, but being so complex as these defined benefit plans are, that often gets swept under the rug. And now we know we've got these crises, okay? And I'm not saying anybody here or anything like that. Don't get me wrong. These are extremely complex animals, and since I've come on the board, I have to say in 2013, and just a little bit before that, between 2009 and 2013, I was actually president of the Cary District 26 School Board, and we went through quite a bit of our share of financial angst, to say the least. So I absolutely honor and respect your obligations and the tough choices you have to make, because you've got competing interests, don't you? Absolutely, absolutely you do. But we want to kind of inform you more, as much as we can, about our pension plan, and so you can make a better choice. But since I've come on the board in 2013, it's been led by Chris Winkleman here, and I have to say, he won't say it, but I will. He's been an excellent president with strong, decisive, and sure leadership. I've been very impressed by the diligence he's shown, both in his duties in the office, as well as diligence in understanding the material. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to jump right into the discussion here, the presentation. If you have any questions, just jump right in, raise your hand, and we'll get going here. Yes, sir.
Christopher, if you could change to a different plan, what would it be? And is it possible to change to a different plan other than the defined benefit plan?
Christopher, can you come up to the mic to answer that, please?
Wow, in the back of my mind, I hear this giant can opener, opening this can of worms.
You put it out there.
Absolutely. Can we, at this point? You know, there's been a lot of discussion about what we could do, and should we change over to a defined contribution plan, which I actually prefer? There's sure funding with that, okay? There's absolutely sure funding with that. The results aren't sure, but there is sure funding, okay? The problem is, right now, our funding is maybe half of what it should be, depending on whose study you look at. But they're all about the same. It's about half of what it should be. And in order to make any kind of conversion, somebody's going to have to come up with some money in order to fund that. And there might be legal aspects to that that I'm totally unaware of, that, and Todd may be able to address that a little bit more than I, but I'm sure there are legal issues. There's certainly financial issues with that. That being said, yeah, I'd love to be able to do that. It's just getting there is the problem. There's also been conversation about consolidating pension plans in Illinois, okay? But we're 50% funded. There are plans out there that are 35% funded, and some there are 70% funded. Now, do we want to merge with a 35% funded plan? I don't think so. And those 70% funded don't want to merge with us. So again, the problem is getting there.
Good. I don't want to stop the presentation. Maybe you could just send us a couple of ideas.
I'll talk with Todd about that, actually.
All right. Thanks. Just to clarify on that, right now, we're in Article III Pension Fund, and we're, there is state legislation that dictates what we can do, and right now, we can only do what we're doing.
Right.
There is no other option at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, so we're going to move on. So this is focusing, once again, on a funding policy that the two boards get on the same page to see how we can better fund the pension fund. We've made some good progress. We were at about 6.5 million when I started, about three and a half, four years ago, and now we're up to 9.2 million. So we have made some progress. Just to give you a little background right here, everyone sees the slides in their terminals? So, right now, we have two people that are eligible for retirement. They could retire in two weeks, they could retire in three years. Then we'll have a couple more in the next couple of years, and then you can see the bigger numbers coming down about the 10-year mark. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at. But we have two who could retire at any point. To focus on this page, once again, it shows that two officers can retire immediately, two more are eligible in '19, two more in 2021, and so forth. So it kind of gives you the idea that the retirees are going to be ramping up here.
Chris, if I may, on that, just to note that two that can retire at any time, that's going to represent about $126,000 hit on us, and they're doing it, not ours.
The next page here to focus on is the highlighted column. Since 2011, that's when we've had half of our pensioners come on board. So we have doubled the amount of people that we're paying out to within the last five years. And like I said, that's going to wrap up here in the future.
Okay, go ahead.
So the goals and objectives of this, obviously, is security for the participants, it's for the village, it's for the community, so we can have a nice, solid, and affordable plan with some stability. This is a critical page. What this shows is a variety of comparisons. Everyone here is aware that Tim Sharp is the actuary for the village. Those are the numbers that we go off of for the funding, the amount that you levy for the fund. So if you see at the assumed rate of return, that's probably one of the most key figures in all of this, and basically what that means is that's what we're assuming, that our funds are going to return to us, our investment return. And you could see, if we start in 2011, it's at 8% for Tim Sharp. The Department of Insurance didn't always have a report to offer. That's why sometimes there's some blanks. But you could see that both the Department of Insurance and Lauterbach and Amon, who represents the pension fund, are at 6.5%. That's what we think is what our fund, with our asset allocation, can return. Right now, what the village is using is 7.5%. So we think that's not a realistic number, and give some false present, some false numbers. If you look at the investment return, those are the actual returns that the fund is getting, right? So in a perfect world, you want those to see 6.5% or better. But you can see how it varies from eight to three. When you see the differences between Tim Sharp and Lauterbach and Amon, that has to do with expenses, net of expenses. If we move down, we see the percent funded. Why is that important? In 2011, the state legislator said that you have until 2040 to get 90% funded, okay? And if you look at 2011, we started about 57%, and if you look at Tim Sharp's numbers, we're slowly going down. If you look at the Department of Insurance, relatively flat, and flat or down with Lauterbach and Amon. Once again, that rate of return, when you lower the rate of return, that percent fund, it goes down, because you're saying your investments aren't going to bring as much money to you. So if we, if we lower what the village is using from 7.5 down to 7.25, 6, that percent funded on Tim Sharp's line is going to go down, and it'll probably go down significantly. After that, we have the recommended contribution. Once again, that's Tim Sharp, that's what the village will actually then tax levy and what goes into the pension fund. Department of Insurance, that's their recommendation. And then we have Lauterbach and Amon, that would be the pension fund's recommendation. The difference between that on 2013 and 2014, in 2013, we asked for 100% funding, and then the following years, we've been at 90% to follow the state guidelines. And then at the bottom, it has what the guidelines are from the Illinois Department of Insurance. Where they get their numbers from is from JP Morgan. So JP Morgan will say, based on your type of fund with your allocation, which is all dictated by the state, they'll say, we expect you to get about 6.5%. When our fund goes up to 10 million, it would go up to 6.34. Any questions on that? Those are, those are a lot of, some key points that really dictate many things. The rate of return is critical.
When does it go to 10 million?
Good question. At the end of the year for 2015, we're at 9.4 million. The market hasn't done well lately, so as of the end of last month, we're at 9.2 million.
And as the village trustees may recall, within this fiscal year budget, 2015, 16, which expires April 30, we had a one-time basis with the efforts of the departments to manage well within budget, we made a $200,000 one-time transfer to the fund during this year. So that's something we don't always do. It isn't, it isn't.
That is included. If you would have asked me six months ago, I would say we'd probably be really close to 10 million, but things have changed. So I would, you know, I would assume we'll hit that 10 million mark. It could be this year. I would think it'd be a safer assumption to say that in 2017. But that's, once again, that's going to be up to the markets.
Okay.
So then, in ballpark numbers, if we were to need to be fully funded today, we'd need to be somewhere around the $20 million mark.
That is correct. And we'll show some figures a little further on. It'll show where we are now, and where we expect the liability and the assets to be down the road. And we kind of shoot that out to 2040, because once again, that's what the state of Illinois wants us to focus on.
That might answer then my question, too, is the percent funded. You mentioned that we have two, and then another two, and then possibly five, six, seven people in the pipeline for retirements.
Yes.
Do we know, like, then, when those seven or five people come online for retiring, what, how does that impact the percent funded?
That's all done by the actuaries. They take all that into consideration. They look at when people are most likely going to be hired, when they retire, when they're eligible. Actually, they look at mortality tables. So they tie all of that in to kind of paint the general picture. Once again, it's, you know, it's the best guess. You use all the data that you can have that's supplied to you, and come up with the best numbers. Christopher, can you come up to the microphone? You can just stand there, too, if you'd like.
Actually, he's going to be hopping in on me, because we've talked about this before, so just get used to it, I guess. But what Chris said is absolutely right. The actuaries make all these smooth estimates and whatnot, and it's a great long-term kind of calculation. But, you know, as we just got through saying, we've got two that could go anytime. So when we're looking at the short run, you know, in terms of how things are going to go, we've got the market, who's coming on board, there's a lot of things that are absolutely out of our control, but once we hit that $10 million mark, we're going to be in a much better place. But if we're talking a year or two out, I won't say throw out the long-term, you know, calculations, but they're a little less relevant when we're talking about that. We've got to look at other factors. Sorry?
What's the fear with the funds? Why does it have to be 100% funded or 90% funded? What's wrong with the way that it's funded now at 50%?
Well, you'll start to see in some of the next slides that the liability is going to way outpace the assets. And then potentially down the road, you could have a really big problem, okay? The second step in that would be that, per the state statute, we're supposed to be at that 90% at 2040, right? And I think it'll probably be a little bit better explained further down the presentation, and you'll see where the liabilities are maybe going to, at some point, and maybe that doesn't happen in five or 10 years, but there's a potential for some extreme liability amounts down the road.
So it's looking out further? So it's baby boomer, you know, officers that are coming online?
Yes, that's part of it.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
So we looked at the past. Here's looking at the, at the future based on the actuaries' report. So once again, I believe the, I don't know if you guys have confirmed that, but I believe the village, the levy is going to be going up this year. Is that correct, Chris? Up to 720? Is that, I don't know if you guys have?
We are in the process of our budget deliberation. We have our workshop on the 12th of March, and yes, it'll be our recommendation to get up from the 585,000 that we put in every year to the, around the 720 level, and we are working our budget to accommodate that. Trustees will make that decision.
Okay, thank you. So you can see there that, you know, like I said, we have made some good improvements. When I started, there was like the high 300s and 400,000. Now we're going to be up to 720. Based off Tim Sharp's numbers, you can see his increase is up to 2020. The Department of Insurance, they come at a little bit higher, and Lauterbach and Amon, who is doing these numbers for the pension fund, you can see that our numbers come in kind of in between there, and that we're at the 90% funded rate.
So we have three smart people departments here. Why, why can't you agree? Like, I mean, that's, you know, 40,000 there, and that's, you know, 116,000 there. Why can't you agree on what it should be?
Well, the final determination is made by the village board. The village board decides what they levy, okay? As long as you have a standard and correct actuarial method, different numbers can be used. There's different mortality tables. There's a variety of things that would impact these numbers. As long as the village, who does make the final determination in that, uses their actuary, and that's an accepted method, then that's what you can tax levy. We look at it just a little bit differently, maybe a little more conservatively, because we want to have the best possible funding for the Pension Board.
And the three different areas are not necessarily using the same rates of return, either, right?
Correct.
Exactly. So, I mean, basically, it's $1 million. When you're at that big of a number, $100,000, one way or another, it's not that big of a deal.
Yeah, I mean, it adds up over time, but yeah, the rate of return, once again, that is an important factor when you look at these contribution amounts. Any other questions on it? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Chris right now.
Just the arrow piece on this. I think I'm doing this right. Okay. So let's talk a little bit about current funding, where we're at right now. We've actually assumed in some of the comparisons down the road that we're going to start with that 720,000 amount, that that will be approved. And from there, we're basically saying, we're going to look out the next 25 years or so to 2040, and we're going to project the payroll increases 4.5%. Now, again, that's going to take into account cost of living increases, promotions, hires, terminations, things like that. The difference is going to be in the investment returns. Now, again, and we're going to make the case for this later, the 6.5%. We're going to get to that. That is key. I want you all to focus on that, because that is key. Because really, when it comes down to it, there are three ways to fund a retirement plan, right? I mean, you can have the taxpayers put in money, you can have the employees put in money, or you can have Mr. Market put in money. And if we're basically saying, yeah, we're going to get 7.5%, that's that much less that everybody else has to put in. Well, I mean, the employees are under a contract, so we kind of have an idea how that's going to go. Taxpayers, I mean, you guys are deliberating that. So really, right now, from your point of view, it's, okay, is it going to be Mr. Market or taxpayer? And of course, we'd all love it to be Mr. Market. But the fact of the matter is, the 7.5% is unrealistic. We cannot responsibly say we're going to assume that, and hopefully, you know, and down the road, we'll find out some bad consequences of that. So let me move on here. Okay. This right here is probably one of the most important slides in the whole presentation, okay? And what we're looking at right here, let me actually get on here so I can be on the same page literally. Okay, so the top line is the liability, and what we're projecting that out to be based on the assumptions that I just mentioned. And the bottom is the projected asset value based on 6.5%, not 7.5%. Again, we're going to make the case for 6.5%, but you can see, there are two aspects of this I'm going to point out, okay? Aspect number one, look at where we start at. We are, as you said, about $10 million underfunded, okay? And frankly, you know, being, being an accountant, I naturally start doing math in my head, okay? We're $10 million underfunded, we've got to get, you know, maybe we'll want to eliminate that. Let's just make the numbers easy. We want to eliminate that underfunding by, by 2040. So what is that? 10 million divided by 25 is $400,000 a year. Oh, my gosh, how's that going to happen? Okay? But again, there are three ways of actually funding this, and we're hoping the market is going to help us out with this, even at 6.5% rate. Now, I like to call this kind of a train wreck in slow motion, the way it is right now. And the reason I call it a train wreck in slow motion is because, well, we've got an opportunity to actually stop the train, and the sooner you start, the better chance you have of stopping that train, right? And so the sooner we actually get the funding up, the more we can let the market work for us, which it does in the long run, we've found. The more we can have Mr. Market actually provide some of these returns for us. So where it stands right now, based on, on what we project the funding to be, we're going to be underfunded by some 34 million by 2040, which is not at all where we want to be. Are there any questions on this?
And is that differential growing because the rate of money out is far exceeding the rate of return and money's in?
Actually, it's growing because the liabilities are increasing. We've got wages that are going up, okay? And we've got staff coming in and out, so, you know, we're projecting wages are going to go up a bit, and as you'll see later on, it's not going to be actually at the rate of what we project our fund's going to go up, so that's the good news. But, no, this is, this is basically based on liabilities. Now, in the short term, as I said, we're looking to cash in, cash out, because we want to get to that $10 million mark as soon as possible.
Is that keeping steady, the amount of police officers we presently have, or is that build in an increase to staff?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, maybe, Tim, as far as I'm aware, that's keeping steady. Is that, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's an important point for the trustees as we head into the budget workshop, and of course, we always have to review our staffing levels, but the village board made a decision this fiscal year to reduce sworn positions by two. And so I think the answer is that it's not necessarily factored into this analysis. Again, also, that could change down the road by staffing decisions, of course, as well, but there's two positions that aren't there that were there last year.
Yeah, my sense of it is that if there are other scenarios that can be run, we can, we can run those, too.
Yeah, sure.
You know, that shouldn't be too big of a deal. Okay, this takes the previous slide, it kind of maps it out in terms of percent funding, okay? And the way it actually maps out, and I want to think of the best way to express this. Somebody made a point regarding the funding of the plan and how that works, and percent funding and whatnot. And, you know, as we look out, and we're looking at the market to kind of help fund us, that trend accelerates, okay? It's like compound interest. You all have heard of that, I'm sure. And, but by the same token, the wages and the liabilities are subject to the compound interest as well. And there is a point that if we don't change what we're doing, that our percentage funding, while it goes up, assuming the market cooperates with us, is going to come back down again. And so that actually is why you see the disparity between the funded and, the liability and the funding, the market value of the asset actually widening the way it is. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. So again, we've been talking about the capital market projections versus the basis for contributions, and we'd like to make the case that the projected rate of return should be 6.5% and not 7.5%. And, okay, that slide isn't quite right. We're not going to see the next slide for that comparison, but we inserted one in the middle, which I like here. And so on slide 15, this is, this is the way we see it. This is the way our financial professionals see it. This is rates of return on various asset classes. We've got various asset classes that we can invest in, and of course, we've got various asset classes we cannot invest in based on law. And of course, we've got various asset classes we cannot invest in based on law. We've got limitations on percent funding, right? So if you look at the columns there, and we've got, the leftmost column talks about the asset classes. And then we look at what we, the parameters that we can invest in those asset classes, 55, or 45% equity, 55% fixed income, 55%. These are just some what-ifs, okay? And what we've done here is shown over various asset classes. If we were to actually take the same pro-rata amount of investment, okay? So in other words, you can invest a higher percent of your portfolio in, say, the U.S. large cap if you're allowed to invest a higher percent of your entire portfolio in equities, okay? But those are all pro-rata. And you can see that, you know, given the assumptions on the rates of return, that there are various, you know, rates that we're going to come up with. Now, where do those assumptions come from? Okay? We're looking at the column all the way to the right where you see U.S. large cap, 7.5% and the mid-cap is 7.8% and so on. And, you know, you've got a lot of companies out there that are putting things out like this. Edison has gone back to 1926 and said, here's what it looks like. JP Morgan has their approach. MB Financial has their approach. But, and I actually like what MB Financial is doing. They don't go back a set number of years when they look at this. Why? Well, we've got a different world than we did back in 1926. Microsoft didn't exist. IBM did, but look where they are now. Dotcom was an unknown as well. It's a different world grid right now. They go back different amounts depending on the asset class themselves, and they frankly weren't willing to go too far into depth with this. That is proprietary, but, but the overall approach is sound as far as I'm concerned because they're not only taking into account where we're at right now with the market, they're also projecting out in the future, okay? That's important too, because you look at the 1980s when we had all these great returns in the market, the 1990s where we had all these great returns in the market, you've got to look at the demographics involved with that. Because we had the baby boomer generation starting to get productive and starting to really, you know, increase the value of the, of the companies. Then in the 90s, what did they start doing? They started saving for retirement. Now, so they're buying stocks and bonds and things like that. And that, of course, was supply and demand, that's going to bid up the prices. And that's what we saw in the 80s and 90s. The baby boomer generation, though, is actually the largest population bulge in the history of, well, I want to say in the last 500 years, okay? Demographically speaking. I think a lot of us, pardon me if I'm overstepping my bounds, but a lot of us remember having friends with families of four, five, six people. And we just don't see that as much anymore. And so when we look out in the next 10, 20 years, we're not going to see that same kind of population bulge going into the workforce. And we're not going to see that same kind of population bulge buying stocks and bonds. So I am concerned over how equities will perform over the next, you know, several decades. So I think it actually is very appropriate that we look at the big picture here and have more muted expectations, okay? Are there any questions about, about this? I don't know if I'm making sense to people, or?
Yes.
So this is what you get if, okay, we say, we're going to assume 7.5% rate of return, but we only get 6.5% of return. I think you've all figured out right now, the top line is 7.5% and the bottom is 6.5%. What we don't want to see is we're assuming 7.5% all along and we wake up one day and go, oh, my gosh, we're, you know, we don't have as much funding as we thought we did by, what is that? $11 million, I think, is what I eyeballed there. And so that's what we're here to talk about, is how we don't end up waking up one day and saying, you know, what, what happened? So with that, I think Chris is going to come up and talk about a few scenarios that we've got, want to talk to you about.
So on this chart that you have up here right now, that's assuming that you're fully, because we're really not fully funded, but given that the lines start together, is that making an assumption that you're fully funded?
Yeah, this is not talking about fully funded or anything like that. This is just talking about what happens with the investment returns if we're assuming 7.5% versus 6.5%. We're not relating this back to how funded we are.
Okay, okay.
None of this one.
So you start to have a, a gap after, what, about seven or eight years where you're not keeping?
Well, you know, assuming the market behaves in perfect lockstep, but we know it won't, you're going to see differences right away. It's just that the density of this graph doesn't let the eyeball see those differences as readily, but you see that grows over time, and that makes sense. You know, really, in the investment world, if you talk about, you know, a half percent or a quarter percent or 1% difference in returns, that's huge over the long term, over 20, 30 years. And so you hear a lot of these companies out there going things, saying things like, you know, let's look at the fees involved too. Because if you're paying a lot in fees, it's not how much you, you make, it's how much you keep, which is also our point of view too, by the way. Other questions?
I'm curious if you've done any analysis. If you had a fully funded fund today, what would the rate of return have to be to stay fully funded over the period out till 2040?
Yeah, you know, the answer is no, although I fantasized about that because, you know, I'm looking at the current interest rate environment. And I started running some numbers last year regarding, oh, my gosh, what if we just said to the taxpayer, we're going to have a bond referendum to fund this thing and be done with it, okay? And it was pretty doggone close, you know, assuming different rates of return and things like that. I can't remember the results of that analysis, but, you know, in this current interest rate environment, whoo, you know, it, you know, you do wonder about that.
Well, that was, I mean, I, I didn't know when to ask that question, but.
Sure.
That's part of what I've been thinking about when I look at the graphs. I mean, we're, we're not going into, okay, there'll be a little blip where rates are a little softer, but long-term out to 2040, we're not going to be where we are today. And if you could fully fund the facility sooner rather than later, there has to be some sort of a, an outflow percent, or a rate of return percentage that you can calculate where you can keep your lines consistent.
I played with that last year, I don't have that off the top of head. I will say this, though, you probably remember on, on the school board, we floated a referendum, I think it was 2011. And for $15 million, which happened to be the shortfall that we saw in our cash balance, we'd end the year with a $15 million deficit. So if we didn't have $15 million in loan, we didn't have any money, period, okay? And we're at the point at that stage that if, we, we could not increase our borrowing, but our cost structure was such where we, you know, if we didn't make any changes immediately, we're bankrupt, period. End of, end of story. We actually did that, as you know, you're paying the tax bill on that. But it actually, it worked out extremely well for us. So that is something I really think we ought to consider, but working with bonds is, is very tricky. There's a very, the market is, is very wrought with regulation and whatnot. And so there are specialists out there who, who can actually give us more information on that.
I think that would be an interesting exercise to present to the board. I mean, it's really, it's, it's for a different purpose, but it's no different than we talk about borrowing money for a public safety building or to improve the roads or whatever the case might be. It's a period in time where we have relatively low cost of capital for things that we know we're going to have to do. This is not infrastructure, but it's an expenditure. So I think it would be an exercise that would be of value to the board to see.
Yeah, some people would argue that having police is as critical as having infrastructure. So I absolutely agree, it's something that should be looked at.
Under that scenario, how do you make the bond payments?
How are you going to make the bigger payments when we get out to $1 million and a half dollars a year that we got to put aside?
I think that would be a separate levy, but, you know, I will tell you this, my experience with working with the bond folks when I was on the board is that, you know, they're happy to run scenarios on that. You know, the professionals, they're, they're happy because, you know, we're talking, you know, 10, 15, whatever, $10 million, we did 15. We're talking that kind of money. If there are fees involved, they're going to pay their bills. There just will be. And you factor that in and they tell you whether your thumbs up or down and, you know.
I just think, Chris, that how you pay for it, really important, obviously, but it's not, it's not critical to, to the perspective of just having the information. This is more for information, given where we are with interest rates, knowing we've got a gap. You know, we're looking at different ways to fund that gap. And if you can close it altogether at a low rate of interest, it's, it would be, I think, beneficial to the board to understand that.
Interesting timing. I didn't mean to interrupt, but on your agenda tonight under consent, you're aware we have a municipal financial advisor agreement that's been competitively bid in, depending upon who you select, that firm certainly could do that exercise, that's what they do.
I had one sort of related question to that. Do you know if, well, first off, who do we have to be compliant to? So to, to reach 2040 at 100% financing, is that a federal law, is it a state law?
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois law, even though the state of Illinois is.
Yeah, you know, that's the first thing I thought, is who the heck are they to tell us how to run a pension fund?
They can't run their own.
Oh, right. You know, do as I say, not as I do, obviously. But, you know, on the other hand, some of these things are, are reasonable. I don't happen to agree with some of the restrictions in terms of, you know, equities versus bonds, you know, stocks versus bonds. But, you know, especially when you have investment pros involved with that.
And the related question to, who are we responsible to to get to that number? Do you know if a village pledging a letter of credit for a gap is a workaround to fulfilling the gap, actually funding the gap?
Boy, that sounds like it's subject to a lot of legal ramifications. I wouldn't really want to answer that.
I, I think it would be, I view this in some respects like a landlord asking a tenant for a letter of credit to back up the payment of the rent. It's a very simplistic way to look at it, right? So I'm just curious if you could find out if letters of credit are a way to be able to substantiate to the state of Illinois that you're filling that gap? I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I don't know exactly how that letter of credit actually gets funded at the end of the day.
Well, the letter of credit, it's simple, it's like any other letter of credit. The Village of Cary issues to the state of Illinois a letter of credit for the, the gap amount. If, if the pension payments are not made by the Village of Cary, let's say they're only made 70% of a million dollar payment, for instance, then there's a $300,000 draw on that letter of credit, which gets paid to the state, and the state comes back and says, oh, Cary, you got to make up that $300,000.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's one way of doing it. I just want to make sure that whatever we decide, we're, we're talking about not, you know, accruals or anything like that, we're talking about actual money going in that can actually earn real rates of return. So I, I'm probably not as versed on letters of credit as you are. Yeah, go ahead.
We can look at that in the back.
I was just talking to Todd Schroeder, and he said that would be a, a matter for the Illinois Department of Insurance. They would have to approach them with that. So we can look at that, and we can also get back to you on the numbers. If a lump sum came in at 5 million to cut the gap in half or 10 million, so we can get all of that information for you.
Okay, thanks. I have no more questions.
Yep. Do we run, do we run scenarios, Chris, sorry about that, do we run scenarios where we have 6.5 and 7.5? If we had an automated, we're supposed to contribute $500,000 a year if it's at 6.5, if it's at 7.5, do you run the scenarios that say now we only have to, you know, fund it at $450,000 for that year?
Yeah, we, we do have two scenarios right now that you mentioned that right in front of you, and I'm going to go over those. I mean, there are a variety of things that you can come up with. But why don't we start off going with these scenarios? And maybe that'll answer your question. So what we have are a couple of funding options, if you want to call them. So here's the, the first scenario. And really, with the, the levy that might be approved at 720, that falls almost right into line with both of the options we're going to present with you tonight. So it would be the tax levy of 720,000 that would be funded later this year in 2016. Then for the next four years after that, we'd be asking for an additional 110,000. So we take the pain upfront and then it eases on the back end. So that would be for the next four years in 2021. This gets you up to 100% funding by 2040. Okay? And once again, we would use the rate of return of 6.5%.
Is that, is that 110,000, though, then, would it be 830,000 the next year?
Yeah, it compounds.
950,000 the next year.
We'll talk about that at the end here.
Yeah, that's what I heard at the budget meeting last year, was that these exorbitant costs that are coming down.
Yeah, it's, I mean, when, when you truly look at the numbers, the way that our actuary shows, that there is a tremendous amount of funding that yet has to be done. So here, this is the same scenario. Let me go to the next page. So it's at 6.5% is that rate of return. So this shows you, if you remember that chart in the back where those lines go apart, so here, they almost touch. The reason they don't touch, it doesn't go into the next fiscal year. But this would close that gap, a lot of pain upfront, and obviously, those numbers will continue to increase, but we get to 100% funding. That's to go back to where we anticipate the village, the current path that we're on, once again, at the 6.5%, which we think is more accurate. So once again, just to recap, it's the phase into 2021. And then after that, the increase is averaged about 5%. This goes to the percent funded. So right now, we're at a little bit below 50% with this plan. You're going to get roughly up to 100% funding by 2040, which does exceed the state statute. This is where we see the village right now. And once again, this is, I hope I'm not coming off negative, I'm just trying to show the reality of the situation. We appreciate everything that the village has done. This is the second scenario. This is kind of a, I guess, a, a less painful option, if you want to call it that. Once again, we're going to say that the village is going to go ahead and approve that levy at 720. And then we're going to have increases of 70,000 for the next four years instead of the 110,000. This will get us to the 90% funded, which is the current state statute requirements. Once again, the rate of return is at 6.5%.
And that's assuming that we stay under $10 million? Because doesn't it go to 6.34?
We're still, yes, the rate of return normally would go up to 6.75%. I'm going to default to Todd on that real quick.
Yeah, the, the reason we left it at 6.5% was the, the investment folks who had provided us some of the capital market projections that Chris went over, or Christopher went over earlier, was showing, even if we get to a 60, 40, 60% equity, 40% fixed income with the investments, they're still projecting through their capital market projections about a 6.4% return. So the rate that the Department of Insurance uses on the report they issue will auto-increase to 675 at the $10 million level. We left it at 6.5% just based on the capital market projections. Thank you, Todd.
The other thing I would note is, kind of think back to that one chart of all the asset classes and rates of return and all of that. I mean, there's a real trade-off between risk and reward here. And so, you know, if we're going to, the Department of Insurance will say, yes, 6.75% because you can invest more in equities. But again, we are then taking on more risk to get there. So there's that aspect of it too.
Any other questions on that? So we'll get to the recap on that. It's the funding up to 2021, then after that, averaging 5%. And that's still going to leave us about 8 million underfunded, but we are at the 90%. This shows you the percent funded. So once again, it doesn't go up to the 100%, we're going to be up at the 90% level. This shows you all three of the methods, if you want to call them a funding, and the percent funded. The, the top line, obviously, is the 100% funded with the 110 increases per year. Below that is the 90% funded. And then below that, that's what we anticipate happening with the current funding plan. I think we know what the bonuses are of getting over to 10 million. But just to recap that, right now, we can only do 45% in stocks, which always, on average, produce a higher result. So if we get up to the 10 million, we have the potential of 65%. And once again, the, the chart that Chris Pearl went over, that makes a, a difference between a rate of return at roughly 6% to 6.4%. So it's a half percentage point, which is pretty substantial. And then once again here, it shows us at 9.4 million with the market hit, we're down to 9.2.
I'd like to actually comment on this as well. The other aspect of getting up to a higher percentage of equities is I'm very concerned about the current interest rate environment we're in right now. Nobody knows when interest rates are going to go up, but we all have seen interest rates back, well, okay, not all of us, but back in the 80s, we saw the 18% interest rates and things like that. That was certainly abnormally high. These are abnormally low. And the problem with rising interest rates is what everybody in the investment committee will expect, at least over the next 10 years, is that there's an inverse relationship between the interest rates and the value of your bonds. I don't know if everybody is, is on board with that, but think of it logically. If you've got a bond, say, call it a 10% bond, a $1,000 bond you buy and it comes up with a, with a $100 coupon, that's 10%, right? Okay? Now the interest rates go up to 20%. You're still getting that $100 coupon, but the price of the bond has to go down to 500 to actually make that a 20% current interest rate. Does that make sense? And so here we are sitting on all these bonds that quite frankly, you know, I'd love to see us minimize our exposure to that potential hit we might take, we would take, once interest rates start to go up. Questions?
That makes sense to me. I have a question. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Yeah, so that makes me beg the question as to what type of bonds you're invested in. So, you know, you have the restriction on equities right now, but in the bond market, you know, it's dicey, it's getting dicey with the rising interest rates. So I'm wondering where you invest your money right now? Short-term bonds, government bonds? Are there any restrictions on that?
Yeah, we're all over the place in terms of bonds, just because we would like to be diversified. My big thing is I hate being in bond mutual funds. Okay? The reason I hate being in bond mutual funds is that, you know, frankly, if you own a bond without a mutual fund and interest rates change, you have a choice. And you can exercise that choice. You can either sell the bond and realize the hit on income, or you can just hold the bond until it terms out, right? If you're in a bond mutual fund, you don't necessarily get that choice because you're in a mutual fund with a bunch of other people who may want to sell. And now that mutual fund has to raise cash to pay them out, to raise cash by selling, which you may not want to do.
Sure.
So I can't, to answer your question, I don't think I can give you the specificity you're asking, but I do know that we're diversified in the bond market.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I could just address that real quick. We can get you a copy of the, of our funding policy that the board has approved, along with some of our quarterly reports. It's best answered by MB Financial, our investment advisors, but we can get you further information on that.
Okay. And also, could I get a copy of the presentation slides? Since I'm not there, I'm not able to see those and it seems like there's a lot of good information there I'm missing out on.
Yeah, Chris Clark has that and he can distribute that to all of the trustees.
Okay.
I would like to say thank you to Chris and the board for allowing us to come up here for the second year. The goal is for us all to work together for better funding. So I do appreciate letting us come up here. Any questions?
Does this mean you're not coming to our budget workshop?
No. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Lotte Becknaman.
All right, moving forward, we have a discussion regarding phosphorus recovery technologies and other sustainable water treatment, wastewater treatment practices. Hey, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we are going to present with the assistance of Jane Carlson from Strand and Associates, who is our consultant that's working on our wastewater treatment feasibility study. Some updates on the different, first of all, green initiatives that are going on in the department and particularly wastewater treatment now. And then through Jane, she will give us an update and some information on the different practices that have been evaluated through her work, as well as some additional details on some phosphorus harvesting and some other green processes that have been evaluated with that study. So with that, just a very brief summary of some of the things that have been going on in the department. Now, you're already aware of our Green Fleet program, where we brought in some more fuel-efficient vehicles, more suited to our specific purposes. The hybrid you see there is for administrative uses, as well as some compact utility vans in lieu of some of the big pickup trucks for our service, customer service duties on the waterside. Our e-recycling event, LED retrofitting. We've done LED retrofits for lower energy use in our streetlights downtown, as well as our holiday lighting. Tree nursery, municipal Parkway nursery that we're toying around with the idea of possibly implementing in the future. So we're doing some trials with some trees on our lot to see how well we, our soils and our processes can handle, possibly grown from a very cheaper seed stock and very young plant stock. And hopefully, just for the long term, won't be an immediate savings, but maybe in the long term, save us some money and help us repopulate that urban forest that was lost from the EAB. And then another item out there for the future in our budget workshop, you'll also be hearing about a potential, more smaller project as a demonstration of the rain garden opportunities, perhaps even doing that in village facilities like village hall or a public works facility, just to show developers and residents what the possibilities and how easy those are to construct and maintain. And of course, lastly, the implementation of our biological phosphorus removal processes, which will enable us to meet the EPA requirements that, and the new limits that are in place with our permits. On the wastewater treatment side, just some highlights for you. As far as things that have gone on in the past five years, under the leadership and the, I think, the change in culture and philosophy of operations from Assistant Director Mike Walsh and our Chief Utility Operator John Stein, we've implemented and been able to recover a 20% reduction in our energy usage just by virtue of adjusting and bringing our processes and our operational steps in line with the current state of the art with existing facilities and existing equipment. Chemical usage has also been down 40% over the last four years. That's by virtue of the savings we realized in operational adjustments for the disinfection process that goes on to the effluent before it's discharged to the Fox River. And then lastly, the increase in the amount of Class B biosalads that we've been able to generate in the last five years. That's a more concentrated form of the solids that are extracted from the wastewater treatment process. And those through this time period have been land-applied under the EPA requirements to various, to a specific, actually, farm field out in Illinois. Now, I'm going to introduce Jane Carlson. Like I mentioned, she's from Strand Associates. She's a registered professional engineer with a specialty in wastewater treatment. And she's also a certified environmental sustainability professional. And she is going to provide you with the update I mentioned.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Mayor and committee, for having me here tonight. I love talking about wastewater treatment and sustainable elements of it in particular. So I have an outline of the presentation here. First, I'll talk about sustainable elements being reviewed as part of the wastewater treatment feasibility study that we're currently working on with Village. Review of phosphorus harvesting, a review of Class A biosalads versus the current Class B program, and then other sustainable options that we could look at for the wastewater plant. And I have Q and A listed at the end, but feel free to jump in and ask me any questions along the way. So first of all, these are the wastewater feasibility study sustainable elements that are already discussed in the draft feasibility study report, where that report is a work in progress. We're about six sections into it, I would say, and should be wrapping it up within the next couple of months. So one is, as you know, the potential for regionalization. If we regionalize wastewater treatment, you can reduce the duplicate administration laboratory and some of the other functions. So that's considered sustainable to regionalize wastewater treatment, as long as the facilities are close, the collection systems are close together. Biological phosphorus removal, like Eric mentioned, that's a great way to remove phosphorus if the wastewater's amenable to it, which it looks like Cary's wastewater is. And it's a way to do it without adding a lot of chemical. So you're reducing chemical transportation, chemical production costs, and all the carbon footprint associated with that, as well as reducing the amount of residuals that are in the wastewater effluent. Biological nitrogen removal is another thing we're reviewing, particularly when the treatment plant's expanded and we're proposing these improvements in phases. So more toward the second phase, you can incorporate biological nitrogen removal, which is a way to not only remove total nitrogen from the wastewater, but also reduce aeration energy in the aeration tanks. And more energy-efficient blowers and aerators. When it's time to replace that equipment, we are looking at the state-of-the-art, more efficient units. Better aeration control is also important. We can put instrumentation in the aeration tanks and put mixing blowers on timers and do things like that to really reduce energy use in the plant. Chlorination is very effective at disinfection, but it does require a fairly hazardous chemical. It's not a great thing for operators to be handling, for one thing. And the byproducts are sometimes hazardous. That's why you have to dechlorinate so that you can protect the aquatic life in the river. So we're looking at replacing that with either UV disinfection or parasitic acid, which is a pretty new development in disinfection. And it breaks down to much safer byproducts than chlorine does. We're also recommending better digester mixing for the anaerobic digesters. And if we can mix the digesters more effectively, that'll produce more biogas, which John Stein and Mike Walsh have been really great at getting the boilers working to utilize that biogas to heat the digestors in the buildings of the treatment plant. And then finally, continued use of biosalads drying beds. That's, now that you have the structures already in place, it's a really low-cost way to continue managing biosalads. You just pump them out to the beds. They dry pretty much by gravity and evaporation, and it really requires very little chemical or labor or energy. So that's a very sustainable method. A few others sustainable.
Sure. How safe is that biodegradable dried material? I mean, what's in, I asked, one time I asked Chris Pirniak for a report on what was in that bio, the dried-out stuff that was being shipped out to the farm fields. I mean, what is in that? I mean, isn't that all the heavy metal and leftover stuff that isn't in the clean water being shipped out to the river? I guess, I'm like, huh, what's going on in the farm? I would never buy property that had that put on there, you know, previously.
Yeah, it actually, it can contain metals, like especially if you had a lot of industries, metal plating industries, things like that in the service area. But here in the village, it's mostly residential wastewater, so very low levels of metals. It, you know, they have to meet certain EPA and IEP criteria before they can be spread on land. So it meets all of those criteria. You're fortunate that you have low radium levels in Cary. Other communities do have to really watch how, how much they spread on the land and they're limited to how much they can spread because of that. But it also contains organic matter, which is great for conditioning the soil, and it increases infiltration rates on the farm fields, for example, and builds up the soil. And nutrients, so most notably nitrogen and phosphorus, which are great for the crops. So overall, it's considered beneficial to reuse it on agricultural fields, especially when you have residential wastewater primarily coming in. All right, and so this is some other information on sustainable elements that we're considering in the feasibility study. And one is reuse of existing tanks. A lot of those tanks will last 40 years or more. So we tried to make best use of those, including incorporating the biological phosphorus removal in the existing aeration tanks, particularly for the first phase, before we have to build more capacity. Also, phased construction, if we, if you do consider regionalizing, it's good to phase that construction so you don't overbuild the treatment plant. As I'm sure Mike and John could attest to, it's hard to operate a treatment plant that's too big. They're trying to take some tanks offline, shut down some systems so that you don't waste energy. So we like to recommend phased construction when it makes sense, so that you can right-size the treatment plant. And then finally, improved supervisory control and data acquisition system. This would include new instrumentation for some of those, like aeration controls that I mentioned earlier. But overall, just a real rough rule of thumb, you can save sometimes up to 10% in your energy costs just by having really good automation and controls. So going on to phosphorus harvesting, phosphorus, I might use just the abbreviation P once in a while. And this shows a schematic that I think Eric and Mike presented to you previously, looking at the system, first of all, the existing treatment plant. Raw sewage comes in, goes to the primary clarifiers, and that sludge goes to anaerobic digestion. And then the primary clarified wastewater goes on to the aeration tanks, which, in order to use a phosphorus harvesting system, you do have to incorporate biological phosphorus removal. That's one of the prerequisites. So that would be incorporated there. And then on to secondary clarifiers, the sludge from that process would also go to the anaerobic digesters. From there, the biosalads would still need to be treated on the drying beds, but after, you could take a portion of the supernatant or the digested sludge itself and try to recover phosphorus from it. And then from there, the biosalads from the sludge drying beds would go on to land application, and so would really the recovered phosphorus. The one nice thing about the recovered phosphorus is it's in a more condensed form, so it's cheaper to haul it a little bit farther to farm fields that might need it, for example. And then from the clarifiers, the treated effluent goes on to the Fox River. And this is a summary of some of the phosphorus harvesting systems that are currently on the market. And we've reviewed several of these for some of our clients, in particular Fond du Lac, which is 10 MGD, and Fox River Water Reclamation District, which is 37 MGD design average flow. The first bar shows Ostara and the smallest size unit that they currently have installed, that's for a 50 MGD facility. And multi-form harvest is also the smallest unit that they have in service, is about 50 MGD. They're building one at Green Bay right now, which I think has a collective design flow of 40 MGD. And then CNP AirPrex, which doesn't have any US installations, but has some in Europe, and the smallest facility that they have one at is a 10 MGD facility. So we're comparing that to Cary's current flows in the first set of bars. Current flow is in the dark blue bar, and the design average flow for Cary alone would be in the greenish bar there, so about 2 MGD. And then if you regionalize, that could come up to about 3.4 MGD. So essentially, the size of the Village's treatment plant is really too small to cost-effectively use one of these systems right now. And that's based on current costs for the chemicals that go into the process and for revenue that you might generate and things like that. This is an example of the multi-form harvest recovery system. And the first step in the process really is the biosalads processing. And both multi-form harvest and Ostara need to treat the filtrate from a dewatering system. So that's either a belt filter press or a centrifuge, centrate, that would be treated. And in the Village's case, you don't have those units. So as a, you know, that would have to be added instead of the sludge drying beds, essentially. From there, it gets treated in the harvesting system. You have to add magnesium in order to form the struvite that is the condensed phosphorus. So magnesium's added and also the pH has to be increased. So it's typically done with sodium hydroxide. The harvested struvite would come out of the process by gravity, and then the filtrate or centrate would go on to the head end of the treatment plant for further processing. So the struvite, in the case of multi-form harvest, they don't make a final product right at the treatment plant. They haul it to a central facility that does further processing on it. They might add nitrogen and make it into a more marketable form. And currently, they have a processing facility in the Pacific Northwest for that. So that's where they would haul that material. And again, the biosalads would still, the dewatered biosalads would still be land-applied, even if the struvites hauled off. This is an Ostara example. It's from the Madison Metropolitan Sewage District, which is right down the road from our office. So I've been at this facility for several tours. And it has, on the left are the two units that they have currently installed. They're thinking of adding a third. And that's where the magnesium is added to the process and the pH is increased by adding sodium hydroxide. And the struvite pellet is formed. And then it goes through drying and bagging steps, is what's shown in the right-hand side of the slide. And with Ostara, part of their business model is that you have to produce a finished product right at the treatment plant. So it has to be within certain specs and in terms of the size. And then it's bagged and they pay for, they pay the municipality, in this case Madison Met, to take the product and market it. So if the product is off-spec, and Madison Met has had trouble getting it just to the right size, and if it's off-spec, they have to find other outlets for it. But overall, I think it's been, they've been pretty successful more recently at making the right-sized product, but so far, the revenue is not offsetting their costs. Takes quite a bit of labor. And then finally, the CNP AirPrex example. This one is, I think, worth watching because it can be sized for a smaller community. But again, the smallest current facility is about 10 MGD, where it's employed in Europe. So here, instead of taking a belt filter press or centrate, filtrate to the unit, it uses the wastewater, I'm sorry, the sludge coming directly from the digestors. So it treats the sludge to remove the phosphorus. Still need to add magnesium, but instead of adjusting the pH by adding hydroxide, you do it by airstripping, which is what this blower is shown here. Then the struvite is recovered and it's washed in something that looks like a grit washer. And the sludge goes on to a dewatering process. And in this case, it would be the sludge drying beds. The one thing about AirPrex's model is they tend to promote it because it creates a better dewatering sludge. So it's really a good product to use if somebody has an existing belt filter press or centrifuge. And in the Village's case, since you have sludge drying beds, there'd be less benefit from that standpoint. But again, our recommendation as part of the feasibility study is to continue to watch these processes, especially the CNP AirPrex one and other emerging technologies, because this is a pretty new this is a pretty new area. And it could be that some of these technologies would be willing to pilot-test it for a low cost at your facility, once they do have one that's properly sized for your facility. And then, it might be viable in the future if, first of all, biological phosphorus removal is implemented, as you're planning to do, or if the Village ever has trouble disposing of the biosalads because of the high phosphorus content in them. Where we see that most often is where there's dairy, dairies in the area where they're spreading manure on the ground, it tends to really raise the soil phosphorus levels. So that's where farmers are not as inclined to take biosalads. Or if world supplies of raw phosphates start to dwindle, as has been predicted. The date that that's going to happen keeps moving out there, but I think it is coming, and when that happens, then the revenue that you might expect would go up for the struvite. Or if technologies further develop and become more cost-effective. So I'll switch gears here, unless there's any questions about phosphorus harvesting, I'll move on to biosalads. Okay. So for Class A biosalads, they tend to have, the biggest, the biggest difference between them and your current Class B biosalads is that they have reduced pathogens. And usually, that's accomplished either by drying, or by heating it longer, or by adding lime to raise the pH, one of those types of processes. Downers Grove is one example of where they're doing, producing Class A biosalads just by long time that they're turning and storing the sludge on-site. So this is an aerial photo of their treatment plant. They have some covered areas of biosalads storage, as well as some open areas. During the winter and during wet weather, they dewater the biosalads first on a belt press, and then take it out to these pads. And what they do is they basically almost compost it. They constantly turn it, windrow it, move it around until it dries out. And they have enough land where they can store sludge for three years, which is about the amount of time that's needed to reduce the pathogens to the right level. They're about an 11 MGD treatment plant, nominal size, and staff contacted them to find out some more information about their program, like whether they're getting revenue for their biosalads. And they actually offer a credit to people who take three yards a year, they'll give them $5 off on their sewage bill. So right now, it's not producing revenue, but they're in a more urbanized area, so harder to find farm fields, and that could be a large part of the reason why they decided to do it, between that and having a lot of land. And then Milwaukee MSD, that's obviously in a very urbanized area, downtown Milwaukee is where their treatment plant is. And they make molorganite, which you might have heard of. They actually bag it and sell it in True Value Stores and places like that, and they've been doing this since the 1920s. They're about 100 MGD, and again, very urbanized area, so hard for them to haul their biosalads out to farm fields. And they do subsidize their process still. So they sell the molorganite, but it's at a much lower cost than conventional fertilizer. And as far as Class A biosalads at the Village at Cary, what we're recommending is that, well, for now, Class B remains very acceptable and cost-effective. It's also, like I mentioned, very sustainable, because of your sludge drying beds at your treatment plant. Class A biosalads might be recommended in the future, though, if either the regulations change, or the Village has trouble disposing of biosalads on farm fields, or fuel costs increase significantly. Right now, they're very cheap. Or technologies evolve and become more cost-effective to create the Class A. Are there any questions about Class A versus B? Right, and then finally, just some other sustainable, sustainability elements that could be considered in the future at the treatment plant. Solar photovoltaic is one. We implemented this at Galena. They partnered with a private company, so that they could get, the private company could get tax credits to help pay for the equipment, and they also got some grant money for that. So that's a possible thing to track. Water quality trading for nutrients, especially phosphorus, could come into play if the limits ever go down much lower than the point, or than the 1 mg per liter that it's currently in the permit. For example, if they went down to about .1 mg per liter as an effluent limit, water quality trading, where you pay a farmer to remove phosphorus instead of doing it at the plant, could be a very sustainable approach. And then, the ultraviolet disinfection system, like I mentioned earlier, could be a real nice addition and sustainable. It uses power, but much less chemical, and transportation and other things associated with that chemical. And that was all I had prepared. Any other questions? Anything to add, Eric?
A lot of information.
Yeah, a lot of information.
That was an excellent presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, kind of recapping, in summary, the work that Strand is doing for the Village is providing us recommendations and does provide us a good template. And their oversight, obviously, with the whole process for our phosphorus limit project, does ensure that we're not going to box ourselves in a corner where we can't implement some of these processes in the future. As Jane mentioned, making it scalable and phaseable is key, and that's one of the reasons why this was, is one of our line items in our contract from the, from the beginning, and will continue to be a focus, and stuff that we monitor in the future. Our conversations with Downers Grove have been very enlightening and very, given us a lot of things to think about, as well as our talks with the Ostara rep in general. We did ask him specifically if he did see his company or other companies like his changing their technologies for scaling to, say, a 2 to 4 MGD plant like ours. And the response was, they're not there yet, but the processes are, obviously, they're learning a lot from all these big plants that they're doing day-to-day. They've just gone in or going in, I guess, in Stickney wastewater treatment plant, and Sishtoro, which is the largest plant in the world. So I'm sure they're getting a lot of, a good data and a lot of good experience in that. So hopefully, we'll, we'll keep an eye on these things and see if they do become possible for us in the future, but we will keep our eye out, or keep our eye out for it.
Great. Thank you very much. Jane, excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. We're going to go ahead and move the department reports to the board. So is there any other discussion of the committee, the whole, for any requested future items?
I want to talk about the next one, about, we have three lots that are empty, and I want to talk about us being able to use two of them, one for, you know, a garden for residents to grow. Yeah, and, yeah, and then the other one for a pollen garden. So we drive the pollen, insects and butterflies and all that to the one garden, and helps, helps Cary flourish. We'll talk about that, and I have a little presentation.
Those lots are where?
Are you talking about the ones on Simran?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see where you're talking about.
Are you talking about our, the property that, by Cape or two?
No, he's talking about the Simran lots, which have been, prior board did some inventorying of Village property, and those have been softly for sale for a while. There was some discussion, but even sold as a VAD, it came up recently in staff discussion about fixed assets. But I think your point is, until such a time as they're sold, is there a use?
Yeah, and, and they drive more people over there, and who knows? Somebody may say, hey, you know what, this is a great spot for.
Just for the record, there's five lots.
Okay. Yeah, I think there are.
I thought there was three contiguous.
There, when you, from Cary Algonquin Road and Simran goes all the way up to that other, up to that other street, there's five lots.
All in a row?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm just gonna, I think that'll be an interesting conversation, because I've thought about that also. And then, Eric, when you had your presentation, one of the slides said Parkway Tree Nursery. What exactly is that?
The thought was, with some of the excess land that we have available at our wastewater treatment plant, we may have the opportunity to purchase for pennies on the dollar compared to a full-grown, say, 2- or 4-inch caliper Parkway tree. We get the saplings that are, you know, bucket, 5-gallon bucket size, and we grow them ourselves to, to the point where they reach that 2- or 4-inch size. So I think the, the effort initially, and then just, but using the open land that we have, we could get some Parkway trees, five, six years down the road for a fraction of the cost.
I think that's a great idea.
You're doing that now.
We've, on a trial, we've got, we're getting some research done to see what the operational manpower and materials and so forth would cost, but we're already purchasing trees on auction that are not saplings, but more like a 1-inch caliper, which we have sitting out there on our, on our property that we're practicing on, essentially, for maintaining them, to see if we can keep them viable.
Great idea.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So both?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.